Recording in progress. And I'll lead it tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. My usual reminders is that this meeting is being recorded. And if you also, if you have questions or comments, please either raise your hand or use the question and answer box for us and we will recognize you. And also understand that all your comments and questions are recorded and are made part of the public record. So with that, starting with open forum. Tonight, we are honoring and recognizing Captain Victor Neal, who after 33 years of service to our town is retiring. Captain Neal began his career in Westford in the police department as a permanent intermittent police officer. And I'm still trying to figure out how, what that is because it seems to me permanent and intermittent are, is an oxymoronic phrase, but be that as it may, he began in 1988. And he worked as a full-time police dispatcher until being hired as a full-time police officer in October of 1993. While working as a patrol officer, he received several commendations for his work, including multiple life-saving efforts and crime interventions. In 1997, he was assigned to detectives where he continued to distinguish himself by investigating and solving several major crimes. His dedicated service to Westford led him to serve as a crime prevention officer and as a member of the Northeast Middlesex Law Enforcement Council's Regional Response Team. In July of 1998, Victor was promoted to sergeant and he was later assigned as a detective sergeant and our court prosecutor. As a detective sergeant and court prosecutor, he oversaw thousands of criminal prosecutions and headed many investigations. He continued his position as court prosecutor when he was promoted to lieutenant in 2003, eventually assuming the detective lieutenant responsibilities as well. In 2008, Victor was promoted to captain and he was assigned to be the department's administrative captain. Whoa. Captain Neal has been instrumental in maintaining Westford Police Department's accreditation and auditing our police, our policies and procedures to ensure that they meet current best practices. He is well-known and well-respected throughout the Commonwealth for his professionalism and as an accreditation facilitator. I know in speaking in with the police department and I know that the chief, Chief Chambers, Victor, you are going to be incredibly missed. Your retirement leaves big shoes to fill within the department. And which I'm sure we will do, but also a model of professionalism and dedication for all of us and everyone in the police department to follow and model after. So on behalf of the select board, on behalf of a very grateful community, thank you. And we wish you all the best in your retirement and in this new phase of your life. You have certainly earned it. And it is, as I said, with great appreciation that we wish you all the best. So.
Thank you, Andrea. Can you hear me okay?
We can, but I think there are a few more people who want to make some comments. So hang on a minute, okay?
Sorry for the, I had a problem with my computer, so we're working on my iPhone.
No worries. Jody?
Yes, well, thank you, Vic. I just want to say I have really enjoyed working with you over the past 14 years. You have been really an amazing person. And I know you grew up in Nav and, you know, I don't think you've ever given, given up your love for our town, but you've really been incredible and such an asset to our town and our police department. So please don't be a stranger. I'll really miss working with you.
Well, thank you, Jody.
Chief Chambers, do you want to say anything?
Sure, I'll, I'll be brief because I've had, I've had a couple of opportunities to roast Vic and express my appreciation. But Vic Neal is, is, is one of the reasons why the police department is looked at the way it is. Without his professionalism and dedication, we wouldn't have the reputation that we do. When I first became a police officer here over in Westford in 2000, when I transferred from Gotten, he really was one of the ones that I looked to to set the standard. He was my first sergeant when I worked here. And I always wanted to kind of emulate and follow in his footsteps. And I was lucky enough to kind of follow in those footsteps. But he set such an excellent example for this police department and for the community. His service really, I can't thank him enough for it. And I know that there's many, many other police officers throughout the Commonwealth that feel the exact same way. He's, he's really been such a consummate professional throughout his entire career. And he's going to be very difficult to replace. So thank you, Vic. Thank you for everything that you've done for the police department. And thank you for everything that you've done for me personally.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the kind words.
It's all yours, Captain Neal. Would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'll say a little bit. Just I feel really privileged to have worked in the town of Westford and served the people in the town for 33 years. It's the town that I grew up in. I had the honor of working with four great chiefs, you know, Chief Joe Canal, Bob Welch, Tarmac, and now Mark Chambers. I hope I was able to make a difference and something, and make a positive difference in somebody's life along the way, along with the town. And, you know, policing's changed a lot over the years. And I know the challenges are always changing. And I know the town of Westford is in great hands right now. So we have nothing to worry about with Mark and the rest of the troops in that department.
Well, thank you again so much for all of your years of service.
No, thanks, thanks again, Andrea.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to say in open forum is I want to remind everyone that the Access to Town Meeting Committee has a survey up. They are asking folks to fill out and complete. It's, it doesn't take long. It's five questions, but it will really assist them as they evaluate going forward, how to make town meeting more accessible and to meet the needs of the residents. And so they really want to hear your folks' concerns and comments and suggestions. You can find a link to the survey, which is online on the town's website and also on the moderator's website. So I encourage everybody to take the time to fill out that survey. And that's all I have. Does anybody else from the board have anything? Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to make my annual public service announcement to anybody new to Westford. One of the benefits of being a Westford resident is you get free salt-sand mix down at the Old Highway Barn on Beacon Street. So with the first storm forecast to be coming this weekend before Friday at the evening, take your five-gallon bucket, your shovel, that a beacon feels a little lean to, and get some sand-salt mix for your front lawn.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
And thanks to all the guys who put it together for us every year.
Okay. All right, I don't see anything else and I don't see anybody else from the audience. So moving on to our 7:05 PM item, which is our consent agenda. We have a request to approve the following. A special license for "In the Mood", which is the Valentine fun at the farm. The applicant is Sandra Hobby. The date is Saturday, February 12th, 2022, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Good Pickin Farm on 5 Gould Road. And then also a request for the use of the town common and bandstand for Earth Day Celebration on Friday, April 22nd, 2022, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And the applicant is Carol Morse on behalf of the Westford Climate Action Committee. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
A second. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Anita? Hi. Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. We're at our 7:10 PM item, which is an update from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee on Westford's Climate Roadmap Community Service, I'm sorry, Community Survey and Status of the Sustainability Coordinator. So I think this is Mike Berlinski, who's the chair, and Beth Perkins. Hi, guys. Beth, who, which one of you is leading this?
Yep, Beth will take it. I just wanted to say hi and, and thank you to all the committee members, especially Beth Perkins, who's been leading the subcommittee work and effort around this roadmap and our other priority asks. So I'll let Beth do the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, Beth. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us back. We were here in October where we presented where we were at with the climate roadmap. At that point, I don't think we had officially published it yet. And there were two things at that meeting you asked us to come back to update you on. So we are here today to update you on the community survey, which has been completed and we have analyzed the results. So we'll talk about that. And then also an update on a subject near and dear to all our hearts. I know there's been a lot of conversation at many meetings about this, the Sustainability Coordinator. And then we'll let you know where we are with our overall status and talk about our future plan for asking you to endorse the members of the select board to endorse our Westford Climate Roadmap. So on the survey, the, the reason we did this survey is we wanted to know, of course, how people in Westford felt about climate. And we also wanted to know what steps would people be willing to take to reduce their own personal greenhouse gas emissions? And if they were unwilling to take steps we felt were necessary, why, you know, what were the roadblocks, blocks stopping them from doing that? So first of all, who responded? We had 393 responses, which we believe is roughly 2% of our Westford adult population. We had some non-residents submit answers also. And because we did also encourage people who've worked here in town to, to contribute. Not everyone responded to every question, so you're not going to see everybody, everything out up to 393. As far as how did people find out about the survey? Some we found out through friends and others found out because we advertised quite a bit on social media, the town manages newsletter, Patch, and, and many other places. We asked people some general questions about them. And we found, you know, when we looked at the results, that respondents were older than the average Westford adult and that 90% of the respondents were homeowners. And now I'll stop to ask a question I should have asked in the beginning, which was, do we want to go over your questions at the end of the presentation?
Yes, I think that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. So we weren't surprised to find out that 85% of the respondents believe that the climate is changing. This really does correspond to state and national numbers. And that 85% of those believe that humans are the main cause. Roughly the same number believe that they will be either greatly or moderately affected personally in their own lives. And more than that believe that future generation, generations, their children and their grandchildren will be affected. We were happy to hear that respondents are open to investing in green technology. The majority said they have either already adopted or were likely to adopt green energy sources. That's things like Westford Pot, home energy efficiency, and electric vehicles. And they're also open to behavioral changes to address climate change. So this was a very important, important thing that we were trying to get is what are the barriers out there to going green and how can we overcome them? So I would say number one is we need to overcome the barriers to people purchasing heat pumps or at least considering heat pumps. And we believe that's because we need to educate. Because 43% said they lacked information on heat pumps. Many people I think don't understand really what a heat pump is. Or if they do, they believe that it may not be effective in New England because that was true in the past. And as you know, heat pump, heating our homes and cooling our homes is one of the number one causes of greenhouse gas emissions. And the number one way that we can bring those greenhouse gas emissions down is by heat pumps. They are the answer in that area. So we need to do a lot of work on that. Educating people on how to power their homes with green options. This is the Westford Pot Program, as well as other programs to increase the renewable energy that you're using through the grid. So 68% said that we're either confused or they needed more information on that. And, and then cost, as we all know, cost is, can be a barrier to doing new things and changing our habits. And so cost is a major concern for respondents in many areas. And the good news is, I think there's a lot we can do there to educate people about the cost of an electric vehicle these days, heat pumps, and all of the, the discounts and grants that are available to them through places like MassSave. Another thing I guess we were a little surprised at is the number of people who said they couldn't do solar, they couldn't put solar on the roof because of homeowner association rules. So we are checking into this. Is this, you know, places like condos? Or is this some of the single-family home areas? So we're looking into that. Now, what the respondents said as to, you know, what could the town do? What could we do to make things better for them? We could provide a list of vetted contractors. Many people I think have had, had an HVAC person come into their home and they've been, there's been a lack of information on heat pumps. So we would like, they would like a list of vetted contractors. They would like to hear from locals on their experience. We did this, well, Westford Climate Action did this with a heat pump webinar. It was very popular because people were hearing from neighbors, people like them, who had installed these technologies and were having great luck and were very convincing. So there was a discussion, there were comments about idling of municipal vehicles and school buses. We also heard this in a great Westford Climate Action discussion with Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Chu, just a few days ago, where people were talking about, you know, the school buses and the other vehicles that are idling and for many, many more minutes than is legal. Increased sidewalks, I know that you people have heard, you know, many requests for that over the years. And then addressing waste in takeout and retail packaging could be partially due to COVID also. So the next steps, we published, we already published the results on the town website. So if you go into the roadmap page of the town website, you have access to the survey results. We're going to be incorporating the findings into the roadmap and the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee will be using the information, working with Westford Climate Action. When we put on additional webinars and so on, now that we know what the barriers are, we feel like we can be more effective in providing education. And we also asked some people to put in their email. Many did and, you know, I think we might have 70 or so emails that were submitted. So we're going to be sending an email out to all of them, at least connecting them to the results of the survey. I, I put a link into the PDF that you all got so that you could look at the detailed answers to every question. And those are also on the website. So the Sustainability Coordinator, I know there's a lot going on in this area right now. This is just a reminder of the importance that the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee sees. We feel we need dedicated staffing to manage the implementation of the roadmap, including energy efficiency and communication. Really key, we think, is communicating with state agencies, with MassSave, with National Grid. And there are so many grants out there and I'll talk to you about that in a minute. And leveraging, there's so much, as we all know, there's a big movement in Westford surrounding climate change. And we believe that a Sustainability Coordinator would be able to leverage that and also look back at some of the things that we learned in the survey. Educating people about heat pumps, educating people about electric vehicles, and all the new incentives that are coming down from the state. MassSave is totally changing their incentive program. And I think it would benefit everybody in town to learn what the new incentives are from MassSave. So it's, on progress, we, we know that the new town manager goal to explore options for, is to explore options for establishing a Sustainability Coordinator. And the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee actually submitted an application for ARPA funding. And Eric, we've been talking to Eric and talked to him recently at our last meeting about the grant that he is submitting for a regional sustainability coordinator. And, you know, maybe I'll take the opportunity at this time to say that we, we, we very much support that. We, we see it as the, the next step to take. But we, we believe it's a stepping stone because we believe that there's so much out there, there's so much to do. There were so many opportunities for the town that in the end, we will need a full-time Sustainability Coordinator for our town. So many people in, on our committee, in and in Westford Climate Action, attended the Community Climate Summit that was held by Jamie Eldridge. That was a really interesting summit. And these were the two biggest quotes he gave multiple times during the presentation, that he couldn't emphasize enough that every community needs a Sustainability Director. If there's one single thing we can do, that would be it. Also, at that presentation, he, he provided us with information on Department of Energy Resources Low-Income Solar Program, a new pilot program that was being introduced to help deploy geothermal heat pumps, solar incentives for businesses, native-based solutions to get credits for preserving open space. In ARPA, in the ARPA, there's 370 million that's for energy and environment. So we talked about eight different funding areas we could look into there. And I could go on and on with all the programs that are out there. And that's, I think, what we feel, the pressure we feel within the CEASC is it just is going to take some, some dedicated staffing to be able to leverage all of the opportunities that are out there. So this is the status. We have published the roadmap version one. There's a link to it there and we have been linking to it in the newsletter and many other places. We, so that, and what we've been doing since then is we have been working on a lot of programs and also working to educate people. So the programs that we're doing is we're working with the Permanent Town Building Committee on 151 Main Street, but we're hoping the work that's done there could apply to other new building and major renovation programs to identify what should be done at the very beginning of a project. We should bring in National Grid. We should bring in DOE-R. We should find out about grants and opportunities at the very beginning of a new building project. We participated in the ESCO because that'll be huge when it comes to what's going to happen with our municipal buildings. We're looking at a meeting with Eric Hydeman and NEEP on net zero zoning and working with the planning board on EV charging stations. We're working with Eric to develop a plan to electrify the municipal fleet. Susan Thomas, who you all know, is working on an MVP grant for tree and invasive plant inventory. That's going to happen in 2022. And she's also working with the Recycling Commission to communicate the significant solid waste that's reduction that's necessary to comply with the roadmap as well as state plans. So, and then we have a plan for a meeting with all the different committees, well, all the major organizations in town. We're going to have that published on the website by the end of the month. So what we want to do with these presentations is educate people about the roadmap, answer any questions, and then get their feedback. Very importantly, get their feedback so that we can then, in a few months, several months, generate a new version of the plan that would reflect that feedback that we get from the school committee, the Permanent Town Building Committee, Westford Climate Action, and so on. And at that time, once we've come up, come out with version two of the plan, we plan to come back to you, come back to the select board to seek endorsement. I've spoken to other towns who have done climate roadmaps. They have gotten, they've asked for and received endorsement by their select boards. So we believe that's an important step in the process. But that's one of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight is feedback from you on what would you be looking for from us in order to get that endorsement in the future?
Okay, well, thank you very much. You, you folks have certainly been very busy since October and you've certainly got many, many projects on your plate and are really reaching out and involving everybody throughout the community. So first of all, kudos to, to all of you and the entire committee for all the work that you're, you're doing here. So let me start with first, are there questions from the board members? No? Anita, I knew there had to be some. Anita and then Tom.
Thank you, Beth. And my friend, the presentation was very thorough. And I was really looking forward to the community survey results because I wanted to understand how it was going to be incorporated into the roadmap. So I am really looking forward to, I know that there was a bullet in there that said you're going to incorporate as appropriate. But I feel like the more you can incorporate, the more, you know, unique it is to Westford and that people will see like their touch on it, right? Of knowing that it's really speaking to their concerns and their needs. So as much as you can incorporate, I would really encourage that. And I, I guess I would also want to know like examples of what could be incorporated. I was poking through the survey charts because I was interested in sort of the breakdown of, of how people responded. And there was something around, I don't know if it was like energy efficiency within their homes or how to make their homes more green. And it's like the majority of the question 15 or 17. And I think the majority of the respondents were like other. So I'd be curious to understand like what those other answers were, right? Other than. So I'd be curious to understand like what those other answers were, right, other than the answer options and stuff that you have. And I was looking at one of the other results in there was talking about how people could individually make change. There was a lot of behavior changes they felt they could do. If it was reducing their own waste or if it was trying to think of like, I don't know, I don't, I can't, sorry, my brain is mushed today. But it was more of like small behavior change things I felt like were directly related with diversion with the West, the Recycling Commission. And I know that they're listed in your current draft for the roadmap, but I feel like having a more intentional concerted, like, open public effort would be, would just be stronger. And for the roadmap itself, I think, I know you have a section for citizen-specific behavior change or things that they could do. I think incorporating the community survey into that and blowing that out almost into like its own appendix piece might be an interesting marketing material piece.
Tom?
Thanks. It's exciting how much momentum there is building around this. And also, Beth, I really appreciate you sending around the Bedford summary as well. One thing that I think would be really helpful is we put together our, you know, collective community view is to do a little bit of best practice study about what some of these other communities that are a couple of years ahead of us in some cases have seen be really effective. I just think that'll help us prioritize, and if it comes to spending money, which I'm sure it will, just knowing where they've seen the biggest return on their buck in terms of investment, whether it's community education and then they're able to measure results, or whether it's, you know, particular initiatives that the communities had a great response to. And Jody, this may fall into your investigation around options for the sustainability coordinator. I'd be really interested to know how Chelmsford and Acton are doing in their first year of this new program, kind of what's worked and what didn't work. So just in general, both directions, a little bit of the best practice study, I think, would help a lot. Thanks.
Scott?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, as my colleagues have said, you know, thanks very much for putting this together and updating us on where we are. I guess one of the things that has struck me, because you know, being an economist by training, is, you know, the cost side. So there's this notion, I think, that green costs more. Well, yeah, it does, but as we run with the police crews, as we've learned with, you know, 51 Main, there's also long-term savings. So I think to the degree that we're doing, or you're doing, we as a community, doing education, the degree to which we talk about, you know, payback over, you know, life cycle hypothesis, right, the life cycle of investment, what is the settings of the road from a higher price today would be, I think, helpful. And he possibly, another case for that is going to be, going to be true. If you're going to furnish something else, it was the payback on that. And given where energy prices are, that may be relatively quick. Eventually, what you want from us or what we want from you, I guess, for, you know, endorsing the plan, I think, I think it's probably in your plans at some point, it's sort of a community forum, how we do that in a, in the current world. But invariably, we have a agenda item, which is endorse the, you know, energy plan. And what happens is everyone then that night wants to speak to it, and we have to digest it all and make a decision. So to the degree we can get a meeting ahead of time on that, you know, to get that community input, that would probably be a big life issue for you, for us, and for the town.
John?
Yeah, I just, looking at the roadmap, I think you did a very thorough job at this level. The, one of the things that seemed to be missing is some kind of priority or just what we, should we attack first? For example, we're pretty limited in what we can do as a municipality in terms of having a big impact because what are we, 3% of the problem? Just the town buildings themselves and our vehicles? But something with priorities. I noticed that everything in there, a lot of it is, we could do it, we could start it now. I don't know that we want to start everything now. I think there should be kind of a priority. Where can we have the most impact when we start implementing this plan or attacking this? And what can we do? And what do we have? What do we do that's kind of have, has an indirect effect on the overall scheme? So I think if we, and then maybe categorize it by who needs to do what. Put it in a pocket that says, the town manager is the leader on a lot of these. And so what's in the town manager's realm? What do they, what does the town manager need to do? Then there are others where the committee has the priority. So I think looking into further and also kind of looking at things like, we want to do away with the furnaces, we want to do heat pumps, but heat pumps are effective. Yeah, they're getting better and better, but there are some times when you're, you know, five below out here, that you need something to augment that. So things like that, I think, would be good to address. But anyway, I want to compliment you on this. I think the climate roadmap is a very good start. I think it gives us a lot to think about. I think it gives us a lot to do once we digest it. So I appreciate everything that you guys have done.
Jody?
Yes, thank you very much, Beth. You know, having a community forum is actually easier now for us because we can do it virtually. And as we've seen on some, we've had up to 700 people. So we're happy to help if the energy committee would like to put something like that together. We're happy to help with that, and that could be, you know, really interesting to get that kind of community input at the beginning here, so.
Well, Jody, thank you for offering that because, you know, one of the important presentations that's on our list was a presentation that we were going to do jointly with Westford Climate Action, and we were going to ask the general population to attend. So, and it would be great to get your help because, you know, hopefully there'd be more than 125 people than I can have on our Zoom account, so. And it would be great to have help getting the word out there about that presentation. And now all of you have brought up several things, and I feel like, well, I'm going to, it's going to be tough to step one by one through all the comments that have been made. But in general, the, it was, I think, Anita, you asked about the community survey and how we were going to make it part of the future roadmap and what we're going to do in the future. And I think the biggest thing there is that we're going to address those roadblocks that people brought up. This is why I'm afraid to get an electric vehicle. This is why I don't want to get, why I think a heat pump won't work. And John, I understand what you're saying, that heat pumps, you know, there are some question marks around them, or there have been historically, but what we have heard is that they're using heat pumps way up in the Arctic now in Canada. They're using, you know, the, that heat pumps now are ready for prime time in the New England area. And now I think what, what we can look at is if we need a backup, we would like it to be an electric backup because the, you know, using electric power as a backup doesn't involve the greenhouse gas emissions that it does and the expense of having a backup gas furnace. So we need to carefully look at those things. And on the subject of tearing out your furnace or getting rid of your perfectly good Subaru, we, the recommendation in the roadmap is when you are ready to purchase a new car, to consider an electric vehicle. When you are ready to get a new heating system, and this would apply to the town as well as to individuals, that's when you consider purchasing the heat pump. You know, we're not going to ask people to tear out perfectly good systems. And as far as the subject of the municipal, and I know it's only a few percent of the greenhouse gas emissions in town, but it is an example. So when we talk about getting 51 Main Street to be an example for the town, we talk about getting it to net zero, you know, the word is getting out there. People are talking about heat pumps and talking about solar on the roof. And when we implement it and when we do it, I think it's an incentive to people in town. So for instance, if we get electric police vehicles and we can have a big decal on those vehicles that says electric vehicles, I think people will think, wow, you know, if the police department can use an electric vehicle, if it's pursuit rated, et cetera, you know, it's something that maybe I should look at. So we're looking at the municipality to drive things. And, and I think one of the big reasons for a sustainability coordinator is that we are now getting into new territory with the roadmap of helping businesses in town and residents to go green. And that's something we really need more manpower to do. And I think people will thank us, honestly, because I've heard that the new MassSave incentives coming out are going to be, you know, things that people haven't, haven't really considered in the past, they haven't been available in the past. And it is hard to get word out to people these days on what the latest things are. So I think that tackling residents and businesses, yeah, it is, it's big.
It is.
And it's one of the areas where I think we are, we don't have a municipal employee that does that right now. And I think that's one of the reasons we're looking for the sustainability coordinator. In other towns, they are working with residents and businesses.
Okay. Jody?
Yeah, just maybe to wrap it up, I wanted to let you all know that we actually had our first customer plug-in at the town hall, and we haven't actually established rates yet. That'll be coming to your next meeting, but this person was able to get at least half of their vehicle charged before Eric cut him off and charged him something. It's very exciting that we've got those going, and we want people to know, and we'll bring you the rates at your next meeting. So we are making progress, but I wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Okay, so just to wrap this up, a couple of things. So first of all, Beth and Mike, you know, any help you need in terms of organizing a community forum, you know, please reach out to us, we're willing to help you. Any help you need in terms of publicity, of getting things up on our, on the town's website or whatever, please let us know. I also have a message from Sarah Fletcher of Westford CAT, who says, please come to CAT to record any and all presentations. So you can reach out to her. You know, I think, and I hope that the committee really does understand that, you know, sustainability is something that the select board is committed to attaining and towards, and working towards both M51 Main Street and, you know, in the town where we can. But it is a process. Rome wasn't built in a day. We're not going to get there in a day. And as you said, you know, to get to a dedicated, full-time sustainability coordinator, it may be that we have to do it in steps along the way. But I think that we're committed to doing that. And as I said, we just have to, you know, take it along the way. It is a process. We also have to consider, you know, everything else in the town, all the other town needs and resources. But to your, to the committee, thank you, thank you so much for not only all the hard work you've done, but really taking, taking the lead in this and educating not only the community, but us as a board. So very much appreciated and thank you. And we look forward to your continued hard work and to hearing from you again.
Thank you, Andrea.
Okay. With that, we're going to move to our 7:30 PM item, which is our continuing discussion of ARPA funding requests. And so I think just, Jody, if you can just review for us the projects that we have approved, the funding spent and funding available to date. I don't know if it's you or if it's Dan, I don't see.
I'm going to have Dan do that.
There he is. Yep, there he is.
If we could pull up the sheet too, that would be helpful.
Okay, I made it. Hello.
Hello, Dan.
All right, so just a quick update on the ARPA funding. Last summer, we received 3.7 million. The select board have appropriated 1,074,000 to fund 15 separate requests over three meetings. These are all in the packet, so I won't read each one. We have a current available balance of 2,634,000 right now. And again, this summer, we're going to get the second half of the ARPA funds, so another 3.7 million will be coming into us. So once that, we have that money in our bank, we'll have 6,343,000 available for projects.
I think, Andrea, I think that maybe you have Ray Dick here to follow up on the tobacco, and then if you want, I'll go through any new requests we've gotten.
Okay, so I'm just, hang on one minute. Okay, just, I also, yeah, if we want to bring up, oh, actually, Scott, before we have Ray, do you have something?
Since Ray's coming up, I gather, I thought there was perhaps the chance that we might be looking at that $5,000 for kits not being needed, so that would change the total amount. So if Ray speaks.
Ray can speak to that a little bit. I'll also speak to it. I think we're not quite ready to give that back yet because of a couple of glitches in the federal website that is preventing some folks from getting, being able to go online and register for kits because particularly like in apartment complexes, because the address has already been used. And if you don't put in your specific apartment number, the website is not recognizing that you are a different person than somebody else who registered. So I know Ray can speak to that a bit more, but that was my understanding why we weren't quite ready to give it back yet. But with that, Ray, welcome. And do you want to speak to that? And then also to, I think, update us on the Tobacco Control Compliance Inspector request?
Sure, thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Yes, as far as, and I missed the first part because I was joining. Were you asking about the kits?
Yes.
Okay. So a couple of things, as Andrea, Madam Chairman, had said, the kits for residential apartments, we're having a little glitch with the system, the federal system, as far as, as she mentioned when you apply, you're in a couple of apartments in a unit, townhouses, if you put in one address, if you were A, B, 1, 2, 4, whatnot, you weren't able to apply for those. Also, folks, some of our seniors have called, they don't have computer access, we can try and help them over the phone as well as the senior center. So we have held off on purchasing any kits. In addition, I did mention to our Board of Health that we received 110,000 additional dollars for COVID response from the Mass Department of Public Health. Our understanding is we will be able to buy COVID kits for the public. We are waiting for that amended contract. It's been a little over a month now with the Department of Public Health, and I was assured yesterday, hopefully we should see it next week. So we have not spent any money in the hopes that we can give that back complete and be able to use the Department of Public Health's COVID response additional funding to purchase some kits for our senior centers housing meals and wheels recipients.
Okay, that's terrific. Thanks, and nice to hear that we're getting another 110,000 dollars from the state. Okay, and then do you want to update us on the Tobacco Control Compliance Inspector request, Ray?
Sure, thank you. I did meet with our board last week regarding this request, and I have, you know, due to the resignation of our food inspector, the posting of the Environmental Services Manager position, we are looking at restructuring opportunities for the department, how to best be most efficient with not only our physical space, but with our employees and our day-to-day operations. So my request per the board would be that we could come to one of your March meetings and have the board be in attendance for one of those meetings so that we could discuss what those opportunities might be, if that's possible.
Oh, sure. Jody, do you want to follow up on that and just explain a little bit how and why having a joint meeting with the Board of Health, particularly when we're talking about restructuring and also perhaps reorganizing some positions? about restructuring and also perhaps reorganizing some positions going forward, how that would, you know, how we need to do that and what's the process we need to follow?
Sure, so we, I just got this request, I believe, last week. And there's a couple of obstacles. One, the budget still has about a $400,000 deficit. So this would be an additional cost of 75,000 to 85,000. So how to fund it would be one challenge. But secondly, this would impact one of our town units, our collective bargaining unit. So really, it would need to be done through collective bargaining. So I think the first step would be to understand how, why they are proposing a reorg and what reasons to upgrade or change positions. And that would be done in an executive session. If the board agrees, then of course, secondarily, we would need to figure out how to fund it. That would not be an executive session. And then we could take that to the bargaining table if the board supported the request. So I did reach out to Ray. I think February wasn't going to work. We were looking at March. So it looks like it might be the second March meeting where we could get all the parties together, if that works for the board.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Anita?
Does any restructuring need to be approved by town meeting?
Jody, go ahead. So by charter, the, I have the ability to restructure departments with the select board's approval. So no, that wouldn't necessarily have to go to town meeting. However, the funding would go to town meeting, so.
Any other questions? All right, we'll see none. Ray, I think, as Jody said, we're looking at the second meeting in March for a joint executive session meeting with you and the Board of Health. So I think until then, we'll, you know, we'll keep, you know, we'll keep this on the list, but on the back burner for now.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you. And also, if anybody from the, the sustainability, Climate Energy and Sustainability Committee is watching, I just want to let you know that Ray also has indicated that they are happy to post any climate change presentations, public service announcements on the Health Department's social media page if needed, so you can contact Ray to do that. Okay, and then last item under this is any updates and new requests? And do we have any updates and new requests, Jody?
Yes, we do. So I think Eric could maybe pull up the sheet. We put those in yellow so you could see them easily. So the first change would be number 19, which basically had tobacco, I believe, in it. And the tobacco was moved out and put under 49, or, let's see, hold on a minute, 49 to 51. But so 19 was changed to eliminate tobacco. The next update would be number 46. And we received a request from the Police Superior Officer Unit and the Police Association Unit. And they are requesting the board consider employee hazard pay out of ARPA funds. And next, on number 55, the Economic Development Committee is requesting $48,000 to hire a part-time economic development coordinator, 18 hours per week. And they gave their reasons, reasons why. And that is it for new or updates.
Okay, Tom?
This may have been my mistake, but I had thought that we wanted the Westford Cat folks to explain a little bit more about their requests. And I think they're here tonight. If that's not appropriate, it needs to be put on an agenda. I'm sure that's no problem. We could come back to it. And then I have a sort of a more general question, I think, Andrea, which is, I think we're going to see lots of presentations around various ARPA requests out of the second grouping. I'm wondering if we're going to sort of accumulate updates on those and then have a priority list and then come back to discuss those at some date later in the spring?
I was actually just sort of in my head thinking about this, Tom, as the requests keep piling up. And I don't mean that in a pejorative way at all, but, you know, sort of coordinating how we're going to start to consider those. I think, I think at some point, I think that the board needs to sort of make a decision that we're, we're prepared to move on to tier two at this point, or at whatever point that might be, having recognized that, at least we believe for now, that we have funded projects, or as many projects as we are going to fund that are directly related to COVID. So I think we first need to decide that we're ready to move on to tier two. And then, once we do that, I think you're right. We need to determine, you know, how we're going to do that, prioritizing and who we want to come in for presentations and when we want to do that. You are right about Westford Cat. We did ask them to come back. And it's, I own it, it's my bad. I forgot to put them on the agenda tonight. So I think in light of that and that they're not on the agenda, we have to ask them to come to our next meeting. And I apologize to Sarah and the Westford Cat for not doing that. Tom? And then Anita?
Thanks, that answered all my questions. Thanks. I'll take my hand out.
Anita?
Yeah, before we move on to sort of like just talking about the next phase of stuff, I do feel like it would be, we should go back through the list of Phase 1 requests because we didn't fund everything. And I know, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with saying anything that we didn't fund is ready for Phase 2. And I was hoping that we could review that today, the Phase 1 list, if we have time. And if that was also your blame. If not, I don't know if we can do that or we have to wait for next meeting. But I feel like there are a couple of things on there that didn't make the first cut that I would like to review again.
Okay, you know, we can, we can certainly, after, let me hear from Scott, but I have no problem. We can certainly go back and look at Phase 1 and see if there's anything, if there's something, if anybody, there's something that anybody wants to go back and look at and review, certainly can do that at our next meeting. Okay, Scott?
Yeah, as I think about, you know, what the purpose of ARPA was, it was your first to address specific direct COVID costs and impacts. And then secondly, was to, you know, help cities, states, towns deal with the budgetary problems that, you know, induced by COVID. So as we think about Phase 2, I guess I'm wondering, does it make sense to sort of say, some things we're looking at would be funded, say, through capital if we didn't do it through ARPA? Of course, if you don't do it through capital, you save the taxpayers and the budget, you know, some money. So you do want to actually add a column someplace in that column 2 sheet that says, yeah, this is a net impact on the budget as opposed to, which are net new hires, we're net new expansions?
I think that, I mean, Jody and Dan, is that something we can do?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, you know, and the other thing, Scott, I'm also thinking about is, is the other, you know, one of the other purposes with ARPA was also to deal with, you know, infrastructure needs within communities as well. And so I think that that needs to be thrown into the mix as well. John?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask about the police officer's request on hazard pay. You know, in fact, it sounds like that's a legitimate request. The question was, what's the basis of it as far as determining what it would be? And how much is, do they have a number yet? Or how would they figure this out? As far as the amount of hazardous pay? Is it across the board, just for some percentage? Or is it based on actual work, actual events and things?
Jody?
Yeah, they did not give a number. And if you recall, you also got a request from, I believe, Highway and Dispatchers for hazard pay. But no, they did not give me a number. They just want you to consider. I'm sure if you were asking them for a number, they could come up with one, but that one was not presented.
I just say, what's, is it for service through a certain period of time based on their time that they put in? Or is it, just how would you figure that out? That would be of interest, too. I mean, I think in general, and, you know, face of it, I think it's a legitimate request. And I think that they should be recognized for that. But I just don't know how to figure it out.
Well, I think that, you know, as Jody said, we've got requests for hazardous pay from several different departments. And so I think that it's a broader, and I do agree with you, John. You know, we need to have those details to consider it. But I think it's a broader discussion to have, to consider all of that, should be had at a certain point, most definitely. Tom?
Just to agree with my understanding of Anita's points and Scott's points, I think the idea of coming to some understanding in the next couple of meetings about Phase 1 and where we are. And then Scott's right, that we already have a good process for looking at sort of town-wide needs and making priorities and trade-offs. That's the budget process and the capital process. So having that walk alongside with the ARPA money, I think could make a lot of sense. Because I think a lot of that discussion is a direct overlap.
And can we sort of quickly, and won't hold anybody to this, can we bring up your chart again, Eric, and look at the Phase 1 requests? And Anita, or anybody else, if there are specific ones that haven't been funded yet that you'd like to go back and review and have, we can put that on our next agenda? So looking at them, we funded the Community Wellness Coordinator for 18 months, okay? We, we added additional hours for the public health nurse. The Internet Access Program, we're still looking at.
Excuse me, Andrea, just to be clear, the reason why the Community Wellness Coordinator and Public Health Nurse are still up there is because those are for, after the period that you already funded. So these requests are still sitting out there. That's why they're still here, because they're future years or future.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, Jody. And please jump in and correct me if I'm either wrong or leaving out information, okay? We have personal protective equipment. But FEMA is still reimbursing, right, Jody? At least it says it is.
At this point, I believe FEMA is through April. That may extend, but at this point, it's through April.
Okay, so we might want to look at that if FEMA stops funding after April. And then cleaning and disinfecting of town school buildings. It says we have a, looks like we have a supply on hand right now. And it says we may need to consider future purchases in June. Will we get through this fiscal year, Jody? Or are we going to need to look at this after the fiscal, before then?
I think we have enough for, from now through June, but I think he's talking about after that.
Okay, and is that the same for air filter replacements?
Yes.
And then we have requests from the Fire Department for payroll and overtime?
Right, so that we have been applying for and receiving FEMA. FEMA's a little, a little late on some of their payments. But again, we think that might be drying up. And we have applied for the SAFER grant, too, which we won't know till late spring, early summer. But we have been running, you know, at full staff since the pandemic began. So that number was reduced, if you remember, because I have in the budget for one firefighter. But that is a request the Fire Department is feeling very strongly about, so.
And then we have fifth hour of elementary math interventionists. I believe, my understanding is that the school committee is coming back to us to ask us to fund that. So I expect that, yes, we are going to see that again at one of our future meetings. And they're also coming back to ask us to fund a Lexia subscription. And a Panorama subscription.
So, Madam Chair, all I would say is I think all these requests are still there. If you want the group or the person to come in and speak to it, then you need to let me know. But as far as these people know, all these requests they've made to you, and they're, they're waiting for you to say yes or no. But, yeah.
So maybe, if, Anita?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know if you were waiting at the end, for the end to, or not. But I would support the school committee's requests for those three requests, if that's something we could consider tonight.
I, Eric, this is not showing up. What's the, what are the, what are the numbers for those requests? Because I can't see them on the screen here.
The fifth hour is 6, is 50,000. The Lexia subscription is 60,000. And the Panorama subscription is 18,000. So if I can do the math, that'd be 128,000 if you're funding all three.
I think I'd really, Anita, it's not that I'm opposed to it, but before I say yes to $128,000, I'd like to hear from the school committee as to just exactly, you know, the reasons why, the importance of it, and what their priorities are as well. Scott?
Yeah, I just add, I agree with you. And again, I don't oppose these things. For a case of, we also ought to have any, any chance for the community to opine as well or ask questions of the school committee? Yes, it's kind of unfair to do that without anyone from town or a school to be able to speak to it.
Right, and they also, I mean, they weren't, you know, had, they would not have been aware that we were talking about this tonight. So I think, again, it's, as you said, transparency, communication, and that we put it on an agenda so that anybody who is interested can voice their opinions. So why don't we put these three on our agenda for our next meeting in February?
Okay, that would be 2-8.
You know, and then I guess, you know, in terms of, we've got, you know, COVID testing. And again, I think that, you know, we're requesting funding for COVID rapid test kits. I think, you know, we need to look at that in terms of, you know, the free test kits that are now available and test kits that are being made available to municipalities by the state. And, you know, vaccine clinics, COVID medical supplies. Again, I think, you know, if these are things that are necessary that the Health Department feels they need now, then I think they need to come back and tell us.
These are all FEMA eligible. Not seeing the right, but these are all FEMA eligible. So, and Ray did order tests for employees, and she does have them, so.
Okay. So I guess if there are, you know, we'll bring the schools back. If there's anything else on this list that anybody wants to bring back at our 2-8 meeting, why don't you offline let Jody and I know and we can put that on the meeting for 2-8? Jody, is your hand up still or did you just not take it down? Okay, all right. Okay, so now, before we continue with our request from 35 Town Farm Task Force, which folds in ARPA, we have a little break here. And we're going to And we're going to recognize a presentation by the Gummy Bears. And I thought this was really exciting. The Gummy Bears are a group of students here in Westford who submitted an innovation project to the first LEGO League State Tournament. And low and behold, for their project, which was an aerial package delivery for cluster communities, they won first, the champion award here in Massachusetts. And as a result, they're going to represent Massachusetts in the World Festival in April in Houston. So first of all, great shout out to all of those kids. I think that's so exciting. And now I'm going to turn it over to their coach.
Hi.
And please introduce yourselves and anything and add anything. And I think we, Eric, do we have the video to show?
Yes, we'll have it ready whenever you say so.
Great.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity. The kids are very excited. They work really hard on this. Actually, they are all individually signed in. I wonder if you can recognize them by promoting them to the panelists so that they can show.
Definitely, Eric, can you promote them?
I can send you their names. Let me send you the names. How do I do that? Let me see.
Well, let me see, as I'm going down it. Allison.
Yeah.
Arjun.
Arjun, and then Isabella. And Leo, Leo Huang.
Is Jayden Chen one?
Yeah, Jayden Chen and Mia Lee.
Leo and Mia.
Yes. Yeah, this is the challenge they took on this year was to come up with innovation to improve the cargo delivery efficiency. So, you know, they started working from the summer. They did a lot of research. And they come up with a solution where, you know, they want to build some kind of like a skill lift system based, a kind of delivery system in the cluster community like Greystone or Lakeside. And then they went to talk to the building department, Mr. Henry Fontaine, who gave them a lot of suggestions. And now they are refining their solutions, trying to get ready for the global competition. So, yeah, kids, you can turn on your camera now. Don't be shy. Oh, I think some kids didn't get the invite. Isabella, Allison, and Mia are still waiting. I don't know if Jayden got the invite.
They got sent to them, I just don't know if they accepted it. I've tried a couple times.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
Well, we have two of them here.
Yeah, could you say it again? Some kids missed it. Bella, Mia, and Allison are waiting.
Nope, looks like we have Mia.
Okay. And two more. I don't know about Jayden. He said he will be on, but he has to skip some basketball training tonight. I don't know if he's back yet. But if he's on, then he should be able to join. Oh, yeah, he's there.
He's here.
Okay, yeah, 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 Jayden is waiting. Yeah. And Allison still says he didn't get it. And Isabella said she didn't see it either. Okay, Jayden is on, yay.
This is Jayden, and there's Allison.
Allison. And only Bella is missing. Hey, Allison, Arjun, okay. Okay, Allison said he, Allison is gonna, oh, Allison is here already. And Bella, I don't know about Bella.
I don't see her signed on.
Isabella.
Oh, there she is. Yep, she's here now, Bella.
Okay, great.
All right, so.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Welcome to all of you. Congratulations to all of you. It's, you know, credit to all of you for your, all of your hard work, your innovation and coming up with this project. And so I think with that, Eric, if you could cue up the video.
We are going to be presenting an aerial delivery system for cargo delivery efficiency in cluster communities.
We will be acting as the residents of such a community.
And I'm the delivery driver.
We are the engineers.
Let's look at our solution. Due to the timeline, we can only show you our final revision. But in the logbook is all of our revision.
I can't believe it, the delivery driver backed right into my mailbox again.
Yes, I got what you're saying. The other day, he nearly bumped into my child. But I think the delivery dude is in a hurry.
Finally, I'm here. The traffic was so bad. Now, where's the package for this house? I remember it was here somewhere.
This is a typical last mile delivery problem. The delivery efficiency is low in this type of cluster community since the drivers need to drive slowly and carefully.
That's right. Also, a big portion of the time is spent finding the packages and walking the long distance up to the house and back.
Huh, finally found it. Oh, gosh, that's a long drive away.
Hmm, maybe we can build a delivery system for cluster communities. In the air.
Don't tell you're going to be throwing the packages.
Of course not. I think we can use a skill lift system to do it.
First, it should be a hub to enter the neighborhood so the delivery driver doesn't need to enter it.
Oh, yeah, then I don't need to find each package. I can just deliver them all at once.
Yes, you just need to put the package in a conveyor belt. A delivery robot hanging from a cable carries the container and has a sliding door underneath it that skips the package and goes.
Where will the package be dropped? Do I have to do a scavenger hunt to find it?
Nope, the package will be dropped in a special spot in the backyard so that it's safe even if you're not home.
Will the package be broken since it has fallen from a height?
While we aren't dropping the packages, the robot starts to gradually lower the package before it reaches the house and only releases it when it's touching the ground. Let me show you how it works using our prototype. This is the second revision of our prototype. Some changes from the first include that it's more balanced, compact, and has a conveyor belt.
The package falls on my head or some random stranger?
Don't panic, the system is built in backyard so it will be less likely that the package is directly above someone. Also, there is a motion sensor. If it senses movement, the robot skips the house and tries again the next time it comes around.
Wait, you're going to be building structures in people's backyards?
Yes, we're putting some poles. But they can be separated houses apart. And you can make them look like trees so they can decorate the backyard.
I heard about a robot from Amazon called Scout. Look, he's so cute. He goes around and delivers packages. And we don't need to add any poles. Why can't we use this ad?
We could, we have to be home to receive the package. And it's very costly. You might even end up paying more for your shipping.
How much would it cost to get this system implemented?
Zero for you. And the packages you order online may become cheaper.
How come?
Remember the Amazon delivery strategist you introduced us to?
Steve the strategist?
Steve the strategist, Gary Stradis, la 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 la.
Steve told us that if the implementation causes less than the savings this system provides over three years, Amazon would be interested in paying to get it installed.
And we also did some research and calculations. And we found that the cost of installation roughly breaks even with the saving from delivery efficiency.
Great, I think my company will be very interested. Other companies like FedEx and Walmart may also be interested in sharing the cost. And they will be able to use this system as well.
This system also helps reduce the amount of pollution because it uses solar energy. Our calculations show that this system saves 1,500 pounds of CO2 per year. And that's only for this neighborhood. Imagine they use a system in all such neighborhoods.
Since this system is good for their environment and helps keep the community safer, I support it. But I still don't want to put any poles in my yard.
And I don't want the package just falling on my head.
Yeah, we saw some similar concern from our resident survey. Also, we talked to the chief building officer of Westford, and he told us that we would have to get every resident signature in order to build this. So that's how we came up with our current solution of building the poles outside of your backyards and only building an extension in if you want it.
We are also thinking about talking to some builders to see if we can integrate this in future smart communities.
Great, I think this system can be used in cities like Boston as well, where traffic in closed houses makes it very hard for delivery trucks to deliver door to door.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, guys, on your win here in Massachusetts. And best of, on to Houston and best of luck in Houston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Getting back to more mundane things. Our 8:00 PM item is a request from the 35 Town Farm Task Force to allocate 237,000 from the ARPA funding and support an article for town meeting seeking $580,000 for the engineering and construction of the fire training facility. We discussed this at our last meeting. I don't know if there are any further questions or concerns about this, if we're ready to take a vote. Or what's the pleasure of the board? Hi, Ellen. And you're on mute.
Now, good evening.
Okay. Jody?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the Capitol Planning Committee did review this request last Friday, I believe it was, and they did vote in favor. They do know that the committee is seeking ARPA funding and an article at town meeting, but I wanted to let you know that.
Okay. So any further questions or comments from the board? Okay. Oh, I see we have a question from Alisa Nikashian-Holzberg. So Eric, if you could unmute her. And then also Chauncey Chu has his hand up as well.
I do not believe I asked a question.
Oh, well, hi, Alisa, your hand was up. I thought you, I thought you wanted to question or comment, but.
Thanks so much for checking. I think it was Jody's hand that was up that I thought was mine. I was trying to lower it or something.
It's still, just so you know, your hand is still up. There it goes.
There we go, thank you.
Bye. All right, Chauncey.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak here. I just wanted to say to emphasize, I hope you looked at my letter to the board. I just wanted to emphasize that should you approve the 35 Town Farm Task Force request here, that similar action should be taken on the MOA between the Water Department and the Fire Department. So I think everybody should be aware of that requirement specified. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. I'm speaking as a resident and not as a water commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
I did, I believe this came up last time, that $75,000, which was the subject of the memorandum of agreement between the Water Commissioners and Slieman, is in the $817,000 allocation. So that is covered. I do think Chauncey had made some mention about doing it as a separate article at town meeting and when you put together the warrant for June 11th, should this municipal planning gave their vote.
Oops. Is it just me or is Ellen frozen? Jody?
Ellen's frozen.
Yeah, okay. It is, it is there. And we will make sure it's clear in the article, you know, what the 75,000 is for, so it is set up properly. So I just finished that for Ellen.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ellen, you froze on us, so Jody finished up your comment, okay? All right. With that, Chauncey, did you have anything else to say? Or did you just not put your hand down yet? Okay, he put his hand down, so. All right. With that, is there a motion from the board?
So move. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jody?
Can we just be clear for Patty Doobie and me that basically what you're moving, Tom, is to support allocating 237,000 from ARPA and supporting an article for town meeting for 580 for the engineering and construction of the fire training facility.
I think that's John's motion that I seconded. Is that right, John?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Scott?
I was just looking for the exact motion myself. And Jody bailed me out, so thanks.
All right, Anita?
Yeah, it should have been better.
We make an amendment to that motion and do it two separate ones. One for ARPA, one for ARPA, and then one for the town meeting request.
Sure, I mean, if that, and sure, we can split them up. If that's, if that's okay with the board, obviously. John and Tom, since it's your motion, will you split it or do you, okay? Tom said, okay, John, are you all right with splitting it into two?
Sure, I don't have any problem with that.
All right, so let's, let's do the first motion, which is a request to allocate $237,000 from ARPA.
Yeah, second.
Okay. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita? No. Hi. Okay. And then we want to do the second part of this, John?
Let me get things together here.
Support an article for town meeting seeking $580,000 for engineering and construction of the fire training.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you on behalf of the 35 Town Farm and the Department of.
All right. Okay, we are at our 8:15 PM item, which is old and new business. And the first is, we have a request from the League of Women Voters that Jeff Morissette attend their upcoming meeting regarding the upcoming sale listing of Caldwell Bank of property located at 70 Boston Road. Any comments or discussion about that? Any problems? Jeff, are you okay with that? Since they're asking your attendance? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes, so I serve at the pleasure of the board and the town manager. And if presenting some factual information would put some of our residents at ease, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay. Jody?
I think we just wanted to be sure that the board knew that the League was interested in discussing 70 Boston Road and make sure it was on your radar so you didn't learn that through some other means. So that's kind of why we asked to put this on the agenda.
Okay. And just so folks know, Laura Dickey is with us from the League. Anita?
Yeah, I guess I have two questions. One is, I know that the League invites speakers very regularly to their different meetings and socials. And I guess one is, you know, why is this one particular one on the agenda? But then my other question is, maybe Laura, would you mind providing a little bit of a background of what this meeting or your, the meeting would be like or the structure of it and the intent behind it?
Sure. This one's special because we were asked to ask permission to have Jeff come and speak, so that's, we're doing that at the request of the town. We were, some of our members have raised questions about what zoning status exists on the property, what variances in special permits are currently on the buildings and property, something about the demolition delay bylaw. So we felt like those are all questions that Jeff would be best suited to answer. We just wanted to have a meeting that would probably, we're probably going to have it separate from our civic socials. This would be just a standalone meeting for this, just to let people know what this property is, where it is. And given its sort of high visibility in town, just an awareness of this property and what could happen to it. So there was some time crunch because it is going to come up for sale soon. So that was why we wanted to do it now.
Jody?
Yeah, I think just to clarify, originally, I was asked. Yeah, I think just to clarify, originally I was asked by Emily Teller to have town staff, including myself, at this meeting and prepare to discuss this building. And, you know, we are town resources, so I wanted to be sure the Select Board knew about this and that supported us allocating some town resources towards this venture. So that's it. There was talk about you establishing a task force too, but I think that came off the request. So just to keep you informed of what we're up to, so you don't open the paper and see that we're at a forum for 70 Boston Road and not know what we're talking about. So that's really all this is about.
And it's meant to just be an informational forum. The League's not taking any kind of position on this. They're just serving as basically a platform for letting people know what's going on in town with this particular property, and like we've done for other events in the past, but... Well, other things in the past, so yeah, that's...
Okay. Anita?
I guess you're kind of answering my question, but so this is, this type of informational session about land is something the League has done before?
Um, well, informational sessions in general, not, I wouldn't say necessarily about a particular parcel of land, not at least that I'm familiar. You know, it could have been before my time in terms of other things that we've done over the years, but I think this is something that we could have, if we just wanted to talk among ourselves, we could have made it a topic of civic social. But since we wanted to have perspective from someone who could actually, you know, authoritatively answer what, you know, things about zoning status and demolition delay by law and things like that, it felt like that would be more useful to people, because we'd have town officials letting us know what was, what the actual realities of that property are, versus us just, everyone having their opinion about it. So it's more of a presentation versus just a discussion.
So I guess, Jody, do we need to vote to authorize Jeff to attend the meeting?
Oh, I just think as long as no one objects, he's not just attending, he is preparing.
And preparing and presenting.
Oh, right. He's using time to prepare for it, so that's it.
Okay. Well, go forth, Jeff, okay?
All right, thank you.
But wait, don't go away, Jeff, because I know you're on the agenda a little later, but rather than keep you, I'm going to exercise the chair's discretion, and I'm going to jump to items two and three under Town Managers' Report, so that Jeff doesn't, so doesn't have to hang around.
Actually, Andrea, he's the next item up in old and new business.
Oh, that's right, he is. My arrow...
And then you can jump.
All right. So yes, the next item is to request to submit the MBTA Community Form to DHCD and Discussion of the Requirements for Multifamily Housing As of Right. Hey, Jeff, just as an aside, this came up in one of my legal seminars the other day, and boy, is this making a huge impact among land use attorneys, I will tell you that. And they're expecting all sorts, you know, I know the regs don't come out till March, and they're expecting all sorts of comments to be floated with this. But anyway, I will kneel to you, and you can present it to the board.
Thank you very much, Andrea. So good evening, for the record, my name is Jeffrey Morissette, and I'm your Director of Land Use Management, and tonight, as Andrea said, I'd like to discuss some of the new requirements affecting the town of Westford because of Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. This act is sometimes referred to as the Housing Choice Act, and this made significant changes to Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, specifically by inserting a new Section 3A, which requires that all MBTA communities provide a zoning district that allows multifamily housing as of right. So first of all, you may be asking, if this act was created in early 2020, why did we wait until now to start to talk about it and have this conversation? So the answer is, the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, only recently released their draft guidance document on December 15, 2021. This is the first practical opportunity to have this discussion. And I believe that guidance document is included in the board's packet for reference for those folks who wish to peruse that. You may also ask, what exactly is an MBTA community, or Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority community? In general, it's a city or town that benefits from MBTA services such as subway, bus, or commuter rail, or it's a city or town that is adjacent to such a community. And Westford is considered an MBTA community, because we are adjacent to towns like Acton and Littleton that have commuter rail service. And lastly, what does "as of right" mean? It means that the Permit Granting Authority cannot deny the application. And so now, if we get to some of the specifics, what would the requirements be for multifamily housing district for Westford? Well, it does vary from town to town. It depends on the number of year-round housing units that you have in your community, and it depends on the level of MBTA service provided to your community. Westford being just an adjacent community, they have the least owners' requirements, and this translates to a district that must provide the potential to have 924 dwelling units. It must allow for a minimum density of 15 units per acre, and it must be a minimum of 50 acres in total land area. At least one portion of that district must be at least 25 contiguous acres or greater. Pockets of less than five acres in area may not count towards satisfying any of the minimum requirements, and since Westford does not benefit from municipal sewer system, we likely would approach a density below 10 units or so per acre. We wouldn't be able to achieve the 15 units per acre, most likely. So our district might have to be as large as 75 to 100 acres to accommodate the 924 units. Zoning may not impose any restrictions related to age requirements, and the developments must be suitable for families with children. And there are some deadlines thrown out there. So the first deadline is March 31, 2022. If anyone wishes to offer public comment to DHCD, they must do it by March 31. And by May 2, the first deadline to maintain interim compliance is for the Select Board to be briefed on the draft guidance document, which we're doing right now, and we must submit the MBTA Community Form, which is one of the formal requests we have before you tonight. Additionally, sometime this summer, DHCD will finalize their guidance documents based upon public comments received by then. And then, by the end of this calendar year, Westford must submit notice to DHCD that we need to create a new zoning district to satisfy the requirements, and we must submit an action plan to bring us into compliance. We must receive approval of that action plan by no later than July 1, 2023, and then by the end of 2024, Westford must adopt a zoning amendment to achieve long-term compliance. Failure to comply with these requirements means that Westford will not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, or the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. Furthermore, DHCD has said that they will take non-compliance into consideration when granting or granting other discretionary awards. I think that's most of the good news so far. I do want to say that I'm not normally accused of being an overly optimistic person, but I say to you tonight that the sky is not falling on Westford for a couple of reasons. One, we only need to provide a total of 924 units, and that's the potential for 924 units. The units do not actually have to be constructed. One of the biggest factors of my optimism is that we can include some existing multifamily developments into such a district, and with just two of our most recent affordable housing projects, the one behind Red Hat and the one at Robbins Row, that's already 420 units, and we have many other multifamily developments that we can consider for inclusion. The district can also create some opportunities. We may have some properties that are either being, they're underutilized, or they may be slightly stressed, and this could create an economic incentive to redevelopment, where it might not be feasible under current zoning. And so, as the Chief Executive Officer for the town of Westford, the Select Board unfortunately is on the hook for addressing these requirements, but we did put together some suggestions, some recommended steps for your consideration to help bring you into both interim compliance and long-term compliance. This basically means we're suggesting the planning staff conduct a lot of research to get some background information, work with the planning board to consider some options, reach out to other boards, committees, stakeholders, the public, and departments, and then take that information and any planning board recommendations back to the Select Board, so you can direct us on how best to prepare an action plan that we must submit by no later than the end of this calendar year. And so tonight, we are looking for just two things from the board. We're looking for you to authorize us to submit the MBTA Community Form. It's not due until May, but we'd rather get moving on this, and then we'd like you to provide us some meaningful direction on how to move forward. You may think where, if May is the first deadline, why are we rushing now? Well, I don't think we're rushing, but I do think there are some reasons to try to move forward as practical as possible. The first of which is, if there is such a district, it has the definite possibility to influence or affect other possible zoning initiatives that we may try to undertake, or planning initiatives. And so this is such a big variable, and it would affect so many other, say, chapters, and say, updating our townwide master plan. This is such a big variable, it would be very helpful to have some resolution to this. The other reason is that town meeting needs just generally twice a year, and something like this may very well take more than one attempt at town meeting. And if I were a town meeting voter, I think I would be more willing to consider such an amendment if it wasn't put on very last town meeting before the state's deadline. And lastly, I think the sooner we start, it increases our chances for trying to secure any planning grants that might assist us in these efforts. So that's sort of a high-level overview. I want to thank you for your consideration, and I'm gonna, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, Jeff, I'm glad you see, you're not as sort of overwhelmed and pessimistic as I was when I read this, because I read this and thought, oh my God, what is this going to do to our town and to development in our town? But I will, I will trust you, and you say that while you're not an overly optimistic person, this is not, the sky is falling, although in some ways it feels like it is. Tom?
Yeah, I guess just, thanks, Jeff. In terms of the guidance you're looking for from us tonight, you described a couple paths forward, the sort of community engagement part, and reaching out to some of the stakeholders, and then coming back with a couple options and recommendations for ways that the zone could be constructed. Is that the kind of thing that you'd be looking for in terms of guidance?
Yes, so we have some recommendations for you. You can say, generally, we're good with this, or maybe you'd like to handle this all by yourselves.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Nice try, Jeff. All right. Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I thought this memo was excellent. Jeff, this was a lot of work, and a lot of really clear outlining. I, the NIMCOG just met a week or so ago, and they also provided a summary of this kind of within the region, and I was just so impressed with the work that you've submitted for this packet, and I would totally support your recommended next steps of reaching out to town departments and talking to people, just trying to figure out who's doing what and where the interests are.
Thank you very much.
John?
Yeah, I support the recommendations that Jeff presented. I think this is a good start, and you have a reason to move forward.
Scott?
Yeah, I would just say, it's as typical, the state fails to do its job, so it takes the time to figure it out. So thank you, our governor and still the legislature, but we got, Jeff, this was an amazing amount of thought material that you've given to us, and I really appreciate that, because as he just says, a lot of, lot of stuff here. And to sort through it as you have has been really, really helpful, so I would support your recommendations.
Thank you. We had a lot of help from our staff here, so it was not a solo effort by any means.
Well, thank you to your staff, and I certainly support your recommendations, and you are right, while it's the end of January, it's going to take a lot of work to get this ready by the end of the year, so... So yeah, I think, I think what you're hearing is that we all support you and your staff and your recommendations. Jody, I can see you're about to say something?
Yes, could we have a vote, please?
Sure.
He didn't reply you with a motion, so thank you.
Can you, can you get the motion back up on the screen? Thank you. Can somebody make the motion that we authorize the planning staff to submit an MBTA Community Information Form to the Department of Housing and Community Development?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Jeff, but now, don't go away. John?
Don't we have to authorize him to take the steps in the recommendations? Or we just say we approve those?
No, we're approving the recommendations for Jeff and the planning staff to start putting together the plan that's going to be submitted to the MBTA. So I think that's all we're approving tonight, until we then see the, you know, then we see the plan, and then we approve that, right, Jeff?
Actually, it's actually two steps. So the first request is to simply allow us to fill out the MBTA Community Form, and what that says is, the Select Board has been briefed on the guidance document from DHCD. So I think between that document, the memo, and the discussion, I think we can say we've briefed you folks, and then everything else after that. I think you've already kind of voiced your general support for the direction, if you feel you need to take a vote on that, so be it. I think we have the direction we need, and everything else will have to come back before the Select Board, before we can do anything else.
Okay. Great. Okay. We have two other matters, and now going to the Town Managers' Report. We have a request to establish a gift account to support long-term efforts of the Tree and Invasive Species Inventory and Management Plan with a tree planting plan. Jeff, do you want to speak to that a bit? He disappeared. Where'd he go?
I don't think he needs to speak to it, or necessarily wants to, but if you could take that vote, that would be great.
Okay. John, do you have a question, or were you raising your hand to move to...
Oh, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve, to approve establishing a gift account?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a request to approve the Draft Hazard Mitigation Plan Execute Certificate of Adoption and Authorize Planning Staff to Submit Information to State for Final Approval. Any questions or comments? We had discussed this back in March, I believe. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Going back to old and new business, Patty, Patty is here to discuss polling places, and we have a request to approve, to approve the consolidation of polling precincts from five polling locations to two polling locations located at Westford Academy and the Stony Brook Middle School. Hi, Patty.
Hello. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Well, I'm okay. I've given you a lot of information about the precincts, but I do have just a little blurb I will read for the...
Okay.
Listening public, if there's anybody out there actually listening to me.
There are. Yes, there are.
Okay. "I am here before you this evening to ask you to approve a change to our polling locations in Westford. Currently, we have five locations for six precincts, all housed within our schools. The results of the 2020 federal census created a seventh voting precinct due to our increase in population. The pandemic has changed the way we vote due to necessity. Many of the election workers opted out due to health concerns, so new procedures were implemented. The state legislature approved vote-by-male policies, a temporary procedure, but embraced by the majority of the voters. Early voting for local elections was also approved..." Early voting for local elections was also approved and quite popular. These measures expired on December fifteenth. The state legislature is meeting on Thursday, two days from now, to discuss election laws in the Commonwealth. It is anticipated that these temporary measures will become permanent. If passed, this will lessen in-person voting on Election Day and allow for more choices for voters. With the need to find a place for the seventh precinct, I decided to take the opportunity to examine our current polling locations. Over the many years I have worked elections and been part of the town clerk's office, I have attended many town clerk conferences and networked with clerks throughout the state. Many cities and towns have opted for polling place consolidation with positive results. I have always thought this seemed more efficient as well as less disruptive for the schools. With this approach in mind, I formed a working group comprised of different individuals that could offer input from different perspectives. The working group focused on consolidation to either one or two sites. The group was comprised of Dina Donahue, a member of the Board of Registros, the Two Chrissies, as I call them, also known as School Committee Chair Chris Sanders and Superintendent Chris Chu, Commission on Disability Member Pat Rapucci, two Election Day Wardens, Lynn Cohen and Paul Murray, as well as Assistant Town Clerk Andy Sherman. Westford Academy Principal Jim Antonelli took us on a tour of the school and was extremely supportive about the possibility of using Westford Academy for voting. Simultaneously, the Board of Registros, of which I am a member, was also meeting to discuss their thoughts and ideas. Registros John Ricketson and Elisa Nacagian-Holzberg canvassed residents for their opinions and concerns. Their focus was primarily to encourage voter participation and to support election security. There's a lot of focus and scrutiny on election security in the past year than there has ever been before. So this is a concern. Not that it always hasn't been, but it's a concern. We had many lively discussions and theories about venues, drive times, traffics, trains, Route one-ten, small character, small-town character, et cetera. I cannot overstate the invaluable help, the amount of time and enthusiasm of everyone involved. I am indebted to them for their hard work and efforts. Considerations that we took and made were for a convenient location, compliance with federal accessibility requirement, sufficient space inside the polling location, adequate parking, adequate lighting, and sufficient onsite storage. We considered four different options. The first location, one location, oh, thank you, Eric, considered Westford Academy for all seven precincts in one location, the wave of the future. We considered WA and Stony Brook School as two locations. A three-location option was considered by the Board of Registros just recently. This would have been Westford Academy, Stony Brook, and the Abbott School, although at one point, early in discussions, instead of Abbott, it was the Rita Miller School. And then we had the five locations, which we have now, only we took out Robinson and put Westford Academy where we added two, which you can see there. Weighing all the input and feedback I have received over the past three to four months, I am asking the Board to approve the consolidation of our seven precincts to two locations. More in-depth information is provided in your packet, so I'll stop here, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Patty, and thank you to your committee and also to the registrars for all of the hard work that's been done here and all of the investigation and research that has been done here. Every time, and I've lived through this a couple of times, I know that when precincts, when voting precincts are changed and people have to find new, their new places of voting, I know that it always, change always creates upset and concern with people and anxiety. So again, thank you to all who have participated in this. Scott?
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Patty, and your team for all of your work here. I've not heard anybody complain to me, at least, about consolidation of, out of two schools. I have had several people ask about why is Abbott been, I guess, removed? What we have the two versus three schools. But I guess for the benefit of the, those listening, could you, you know, explain why the two is better than the three without the Abbott?
Well, we were trying to keep it out of the elementary schools. It's my understanding from Chris Chu that they have closed schools for Election Day. The school committee voted it. It's nothing necessarily permanent, although they've been doing it all along for the last four years. There's the whole concept of people entering the schools during the day when there was elections. And if they're closed, well, then obviously there are no students in the school. But it's used as a teacher professional day, and the teachers are still in the schools. So to eliminate the use of all the, it just made it easier for the school department to work that out. Although, I mean, they've done it, and they can do it, and will do whatever you want to do. But it was, they liked the idea of keeping it out of the elementary schools if possible. So I was trying to work with them on that.
Okay, thanks. That's all I, I wasn't being critical. I was just asking the question of, of a lot of things, that's all.
Okay, well, I'll tell you why I got thrown off. Because I'm supposed to have a background, not what you're seeing behind me. This is actually my house. I'm down cellar, so I'm a little mortified when I realized I didn't have the background up. So pretend you don't see that.
All right, Patty. Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I know it's been a lot of work. And I totally hear what Andrew is saying. The change is really hard for everyone, and this would be a lot of change for people. But I was, I had the pleasure of listening to your presentation with John Ricketson at School Committee. And so I heard some of the other questions that came up, such as what, more of like the logistics, right? If you were supposed to have one or two voting locations, but it's not all, it's not everyone coming into one entrance, right? It's not gobs, like tons of long lines. It's kind of spread out. There are different entrances. And if you enter the wrong door, you just go to the other side of the building as opposed to driving to another polling location. So there are a lot of pros, I think, to that. And also, I appreciate your packet, your memo that talks about other neighboring communities that also have consolidated polling locations, such as Chelmsford, Reading, and Andover. I thought those were helpful examples to share as well in your packet.
Good, thank you.
Great, all right. Seeing no more comments, and I don't see any comments from the audience. Is, oh, yes, there is. Bill Harmon has his hand up. So if you could unmute Bill.
Oh, there it is. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, Bill.
I'm interested in the words, "more choices for voters." Maybe I missed that, but Patty, could you explain that again for me? What, what does that mean?
More choices for voters?
Oh, I think I heard you say that, but maybe I copied it down from some.
Oh, I know, I know what it is. Because of the election laws changing, there are more choices for voters. They can either go to the polls on Election Day. They can vote by mail, which was extremely popular, well, especially during the pandemic. I don't know, I don't know if it'll still continue to be as popular, but it was pretty popular. And there's also early voting. So people have three different ways of casting their ballot.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was wondering. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right, I don't see any other questions. So is there a motion to improve consolidating our polling places into two places, the Westford Academy and Stony Brook School?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Once again, thank you, thank you, Patty. And then I know, Patty, you have a request to approve the use of ImageCast Precinct Optical Scan Voting Tabulators. Try saying that, guys.
These are our new voting machines. And the Secretary of the Commonwealth needs a vote from you saying you accept them and that you're going to use them. Okay, they came in, by the way. I got them last week. So we're going to learn them. They're, they're very state-of-the-art.
You'll love them.
Okay.
So is there a motion that we approve and accept these voting machines?
Didn't I give you one?
Yes, I did. Oh. Eric, can you?
Tell you what it is.
Eric, can you put the motion up? Okay, so.
We'll make this motion.
There you go.
I move that the town of Westford start using the ImageCast Precinct Optical Scan Tabulator and discontinue the use of the AccuVote Tabulator commencing with the May third, two, two thousand and twenty-two local elections required by General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Patty. Have a good night. And then last, under old-new business, we have a request from the DEI Committee to decrease their membership from twenty-two seats to nineteen seats. And my understanding for this request is that they're having difficulty getting forum. And so they need to, asking us to decrease their membership so that they can have forum and conduct their meetings. Jody?
And I would just add that these are three vacancies that they have, so no one is losing a seat.
Okay, thank you. Um, is it?
I made that motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any board reports or updates? Seeing none, we have minutes for approval. We have the minutes from our October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one session. Is there a motion to approve and release?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Jody, you're up, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, so we have a request to accept a gift donated from Eagle Scout candidate Gotham Anup for funding future Eagle Scout projects that are performed under review and approval of the CONSCOM in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. And we have a request to approve the following grants, the Mast EEP for Water Management Act Grant Program, the amount of fifty thousand four sixty, as requested by the Water Department and Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and Department of Fire Services for funding firefighter safety equipment in the amount of ten thousand two forty-four and seventy-nine cents. Contracts we have with the town of Littleton for an intermunicipal agreement for removal of the sandbar at the Forge Pond Outlet, as requested by the CONSCOM. I'm going to skip Sun Life Assurance Company and move that to February eighth agenda. So Maverick Construction Management Services for the mechanical removal of accumulated materials from the steep stream bed of Forge Pond Outlet in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four fifty, as requested by the Conservation Resources Planner.
And just before we vote, I just want to say thank you to Eagle Scout Gotham Anup for his donation. And just for anybody who is wondering, his Eagle Scout project was to build a footbridge along the Cloppenburg Trail, which for anybody who doesn't know where that is, it's off of Flag Road. So thank you very much for your, one, first, for your contribution to our trail system and the footbridge that you built. And secondly, for the donation to the town to be used by future Eagle Scouts in there for their projects. That certainly epitomizes giving forward. So thank you very much. And with that is there a motion to approve accepting the gift and the grants and the contracts?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. It appears, okay, do we have a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second? All those in favor? All right, thank you all very much. Have a good evening, and everybody in Westford, stay safe. Night, everyone. Good night.